Good evening. This is Athens City Council, our regular session. It's 7:00 PM, Monday, June 6th, anniversary of D-Day. Tonight, we have a public hearing to start off with before we get into our regular session. The public hearing is for the Community Development Block Grant Funds. This is the second hearing. There's a clipboard for sign-in for the audience who's here to sign because public hearings have to be documented. Community Development Block Grants is our grants that the city has used many times in the past. Tonight, we're going to hear from city officials and anyone in the public who may have comments or suggestions. The current plan for the grant would be the Columbus Road Area Lift Station Project. The purpose of this project is to rehabilitate and improve Columbus Road Lift Station Number One on Door Lane to replace old components and increase the pumping capacity and to replace an existing private lift station on Theater Lane with a proper public lift station. I think that's sort of it in a nutshell. Anything from the administration? Would you care to comment, Director Stone? Acting President Nicely?
Mayor.
Or Acting Mayor, I should say. Sorry.
Shall I go ahead?
Yeah, sure. If I can start, it's just it's a very important project. We have a new medical facility going in on Columbus Road, and so it's important for this to be functioning. Any other comments?
Sure. So, the sewage generated from Columbus Road and that Columbus Road area of the city is picked up several times via lift station before it makes it all the way around to the wastewater treatment plant on the near east side. In the furthest reaches of Columbus Road, there's a lift station that is an older station that we refer to as Columbus Road Lift Station Number One. It's on Door Lane. It's one of the older, what we would consider, we call them can lift stations, and these are ones that include both a wet well and a dry well that are kind of down flush mounted with the ground. And it basically collects sewage in that portion of the city, lifts it up, and then allows the gravity to continue to drain it around the city in order to get to where it needs to go. If you remember back in the 2006, 2007, '08 timeframe, there was a portion of the gravity sewer that flowed right along the riverbank as down over the hill, as you go up the hill on Columbus Road, the driving hill on Columbus Road, and it had through a high-water event on the Hocking River, plus age, plus some slope instability problems, it actually slid into the river. And so there was a major redesign of the collection system. And what we refer to as Columbus Road Lift Station Two was built, and it is a lift station that's a more modern lift station near the Laurel's facility there on Columbus Circle, and that basically picks up sewage, sends it up Columbus Road, and then it goes back to gravity in the vicinity of Dairy Queen. This Columbus Road Lift Station One is a much older lift station that's been there for an extended period of time. And what our goal would be is to utilize the allocation money, which is that money that's a set amount of money that the city gets every year that is spent on a two-year cycle to match a larger grant request for what CDBG calls a critical infrastructure grant. We've used critical infrastructure for a couple of different grants in the past. Number one was the Depot Street Lift Station renovation, which happened several years ago, as well as for the de-watering equipment that is going in and wrapping up right now at the wastewater treatment plant. And both of those are pretty critical facilities, as are these lift stations further out on Columbus Road. The Theater Lane situation is another lift station that's in that area. It's a private lift station. It went in in the mid-'80s in support of the hotel that was built at that timeframe. Since then, there's been some growth in that area, and all of those facilities have continued to utilize that private lift station, which is not an ideal situation. I mean, really, if you're going to have more than one property owner, you need them to go into a public station, just because of, you know, kind of the way things grew over there and such. That ended up happening, and that really needs to get put into the public system. And so the other portion of this project would be to go ahead and construct a proper lift station there to replace that private lift station there on Theater Lane. That's the idea with this project.
Okay. Any comments or input from members of council? Other public officials, if there's any here? Okay. Well, if there's nothing else to be said about it, then I'll declare the public hearing session closed, and we will move on to our regular city council session. Tonight, I will be President Pro Tem since the mayor is absent from the city, and the president of council, Nicely, will be the acting mayor, sitting in his seat. First thing we have to do is establish a quorum. I see all members are present. Disposition of minutes. I'd like to have a motion to accept the regular session of city council minutes held on May 16th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. That's done. Communications? I have no communications. Does anyone? Member Micah.
Sure. Thank you. I am pleased, on behalf of Ohio University's Division of Diversity and Inclusion and Juneteenth Planning Committee, to invite the public to an Athens-area celebration of Juneteenth at a festival to be held Saturday, June 18th, from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM on College Green. As folks know, Juneteenth is now a federally recognized holiday celebrating the emancipation of enslaved African-Americans. It's also a celebration of African-American culture, and this event is a family-friendly festival, free and open to the public, featuring art, music, and plenty of activities for
Member Crowe.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Reisner. I just wanted to update council and the public on the solid waste working group. The city council and the city administration have convened this working group well in advance of the expiration date of the current solid waste contract, which expires July 1st of 2023. So President Nicely asked Member Swank and me to represent city council on this working group, and we had our first meeting today with city administration to review some proposed changes to the code from the director of the Code Department, and also to begin to take citizen input and to discuss with the city people's thoughts on the current landfill recycling and composting operations, both within the neighborhoods of the city of Athens, as well as in the franchise district, the area, the business district downtown. And we will be meeting regularly over the next eight to 10 months to hopefully end up with the best possible services for the city of Athens when it comes to those garbage recycling and composting. And we, I think, are both open to hearing from anyone who would like to participate in that discussion, and we will keep the council and the public updated as we move forward. Thank you.
Any other communications? I misspoke. I should have said that, yes, we did receive communications from a group of concerned citizens concerning the location or proposed location of the new fire station. Those petitions have been received, I believe, to all members. They're now part of the public record, so I'd like to acknowledge that they're now a part of the record. Let's see. Reports and communications from other elected officials. Acting Mayor Nicely?
Yes, thank you very much. And I'm here on behalf of Mayor Patterson, who's representing the city of Athens well, I'm sure. He's down at Clemson at the International Town Gown Association and is the president-elect of that organization, so takes over the helm today. So, that's great news. We have some other good news, that Ohio Senate Bill 377, this was the proposal that originated with Governor DeWine, talking about some money to be set aside, $500 million for the Appalachian Community Grant Program, and that has been passed by the Senate. It still has to go through the House for a final approval, but that's a good next step on that. Another notice that we received is from Columbia Gas, and they have proposed a rate increase, and I know council members have received some other previous communication about that. The rate increase would be for $212 million, and it would take the fixed monthly distribution charge from $16.75 to $46.31, proposed over five years. The Public Utilities Commission of Ohio will hold a public hearing tomorrow night here in council chambers at 7:00 PM, if anyone would like to come and make comment about that. Such a rate increase seems huge, especially for people who are trying to put together utilities and rent and other basic services. The last item is another piece of good news, and I think congratulations are in order to both the mayor and to Service Safety Director Andy Stone and others on the city staff for working to piece together packages for renovations of the armory. And so I'm going to turn this over to Director Stone, who has some news about the funding for that.
For those of you who haven't dug deeply into the state Capitol bill breakdown and where money is going in the state Capitol bill, the city of Athens has received $600,000 towards the armory renovation project in the state Capitol bill. This is a really big deal. We asked for just under $1 million, and typically, when you make an ask in the state Capitol bill, you don't get everything that you ask for. So the fact that the city of Athens was awarded $600,000 is a big deal, and this is just one portion of the Capitol stack that we are pulling together to make that about $3.5 million project a reality. And so this piece, this falling into place is going to support our requests towards Ohio Southeast, which is the Jobs Ohio component for Southeast Ohio, and the Vibrant Communities Grant that we're asking for from there. There's a couple of other funding sources that we're looking at doing, and the fact that this Capitol bill money, in addition to the money that the city has contributed over this year, I think there's an ordinance tonight to pass city money for final design on that, but this really goes a long way into demonstrating that it's a viable project to those other either granting agencies or funding agencies. And so we really think that we're on the way to turning the Athens Armory that we've so carefully stewarded for, you know, the last 32 years or so, or really 30, take that back, maybe 27 years or so, into a viable beneficial reuse project. You know, the mayor has worked on this diligently since he was not just the mayor, but actually as a councilperson, convening a variety of citizen groups to give input on what it could be. And then, once he became mayor, you know, going after a variety of different concepts to find out what is not only good for this public building that is so dear to so many Athenians, but also a viable project that can go and support itself. And I think we've got that with this project, and he deserves a tremendous amount of credit. And his outreach to our state legislature on both the House and the Senate side, as well as to the governor's office, to get this across the finish line and get into the Capitol bill is just a huge deal for Athens, and so we're thrilled to death this has occurred. So it's a big deal, and we're really excited about it.
Anyone have any comments to the good news? Anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay. Let's move on to ordinance for a third reading. I'll read the title of the ordinance and then ask for comments, and then we'll take a vote. Ordinance 72-22. An ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids for construction and construction engineering of the city-county sewer expansion project number 317, and declaring an emergency introduced by council member McCary.
Thank you. I'd like to move that we adopt ordinance 72-22.
Would you care to speak to it, or is it all self-explanatory?
Yeah, I should say that this is up for third reading now, so this has been on our agenda for some time, and we would like to get this project underway as soon as possible to benefit our infrastructure.
Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting 72-22? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No, nay. I believe the ayes have it. Ordinance 73-22. An ordinance amending the 2022 appropriation ordinance 150-21, and ordinance 54-21, authorizing wastewater remote site telemetry improvements, project number 339, introduced by council member McCary.
Thank you. This is an important technological upgrade, and I would like to move that we adopt ordinance 73-22.
Any discussion on this? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting 73-22? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Ayes have it. Ordinance 74-22. An ordinance authorizing construction and construction engineering of slip repairs on the bikeway spur between Armidage Road and University Estates Boulevard, project number 348, introduced by council member Reisner. I would like to make a motion that we adopt 74-22.
Second.
We've discussed this in committee. The engineers and the service safety director has discussed this. We've looked at it, and even though we realize that there is expense involved here, nonetheless, there are critical infrastructures that have to be protected in that area, and consequently, this project is necessary. So, have I made a motion yet?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor? Oh, yes, sir. Go ahead.
As you alluded to, throughout this process, both in the committee and first and second reading, great concern was expressed about spending this type of money on top of a whole bunch of money we spent before, and a whole bunch of money we spent before that. I guess no contract or no project is 100% cure. And I guess I would ask Director Stone, one, is this, in the estimate of all the engineers involved, the best solution? And are you confident that in three years, we won't be sitting here doing this again? I guess I'm asking your professional opinion.
Sure. In my professional opinion, this is the best solution. A drilled pier retaining wall is truly the 100% solution when it comes to slope stability. It's also, you know, an extremely expensive solution. And, you know, we tried in vain to find out some methodology to, you know, avoid doing a drilled pier retaining wall, but, you know, when it comes down to the unknowns that you have underneath the ground with the information that we have, to be able to say that this will not slip again, a drilled pier retaining wall is the answer. And if you look at some of the different streets in Athens where we had slips that persisted, and we tried different things, you know, year after year to avoid continued movement, finally, the drilled pier retaining wall ended up being the answer. Joneswood is an example. Sunset is an example. One of the more prominent examples is on Grosvenor, the significant drilled pier retaining wall there, and it was a situation where we tried to avoid doing that, but then, at the end of the day, in order to protect the infrastructure, as you noted, Member Swank, that ended up being the 100% solution. And so, you know, in those locations, it just doesn't move again, because that's the right answer.
Thank you. Member Soli.
Thank you. So, as you know, I've been concerned about this quite a bit and have followed along with this all along, and since its inception. And I guess my only question at this point, because I know that there have been efforts made to try to do less expensive fixes, and they weren't successful, but I'm just curious, if you had to do it all over again, would you just have gone forward and done this in the first place? Or would this be just... I mean, I think it's fair to ask that question. I feel as though a lot of money was spent before we got to this point. So, again, not every project's going to be perfect, but yeah, this has been one that's really graded on me.
Sure. I mean, if we go back to the beginning, if we go to the late '90s, when the city council basically signed and entered into a development agreement with the developer that said that the city council would build, and the city of Athens would build a bikepath spur to University Estates. That was in the original development agreement. So, we, as a collective in the late '90s, agreed to do this and to build it, and then it, you know, took us 22 years, but, you know, ultimately, we got it built. You know, did we envision at that time that a drilled pier retaining wall would be the exact way that you'd have to build it? I don't anticipate that they did at the time, or I wasn't here then, but, you know, certainly, you try to avoid that. You try to put something on stable terrain, you know, from the get-go. You know, as you alluded to, you had a meeting with some of the folks on site that kind of went over the steps during the project and what occurred and what caused changes to the design, both, you know, after the written initial design and then during construction. They kind of landed where we did. But, you know, I would have tried to avoid building it in a place that required a drilled pier retaining wall, but the circumstances drove it to put it where it is now, and the fact that it's slipping is something that, you know, if we're going to keep it as a path and keep the water line that's underneath it viable and intact, this is the correct solution.
Thank you, Director Stone.
Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Okay. Well, we'll hold a vote. All those in favor of adopting 74-22? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. It's passed. Ordinance 75-22. An ordinance authorizing final design of project 313 renovation of Armory, introduced by council member Crowe.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Reisner. I'd like to make a motion to approve 075-22.
Second.
Thank you, Members If. I'm going to go ahead and read the sections here. This jives nicely with the good news we received from Service Safety Director Stone tonight. Section 1, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to enter into contract for final design of project 313 renovation of the Armory. Section 2, the 2022 appropriation ordinance 150-21 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $165,000 to Capital Improvements Fund 580. Section 3, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $774,000 from the Capital Improvements Fund 580 for all costs to date associated with said project number 313. Thank you, Member Reisner.
Thank you, Member Crowe. We've had a second on the motion, so... Oh, Members Spielnis.
Just a quick question. So with this perhaps unexpected $600,000 from the state, does that affect this amount? I mean, is that going to come off the top of this, or this, we can't do it without this? I just want to get a clarification.
So, two different things. You know, now, we went down this path expecting, or at least hoping, that we would be successful in requesting the state appropriation, but, you know, that state appropriation is definitively going to go into construction. So, you know, what we're asking for now ultimately is design cost. That $774,000 includes both all the preliminary design, the final design, as well as the other expenditures that we've put into that project to date here that we call. So that's not all design cost for that $774,000. There's the new windows that we purchased recently that are going to go in, and so we're kind of piecing it all together, but the $600,000 make this expenditure that much more, you know, necessary and urgent in that there's a significant amount of momentum and having a final design in place so that, you know, when we can line up the remainder of the construction costs, external funding, you know, we can pull the trigger and bid the project and get it, and get construction underway.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Motion and a second, then let's go for the vote. All those in favor of passing ordinance 75-22? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. It's approved. Ordinance 76-22. An ordinance amending the 2022 appropriation ordinance introduced by council member Crowe.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Reisner. I'd like to make a motion to approve 76-22.
Second.
Thank you, Member Grace. I'm going to go ahead and read the amounts here. This appropriation ordinance is amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance $200,000 to the general fund auditor to cover income tax refunds, $7,000 to the general fund lands and buildings for tool replacement, $8,000 to the recreation fund for municipal pool maintenance contract and lifeguard certification costs, $8,500 to the community center fund for floor resurfacing, and $40 to the DRD Fund 596 to cover the county auditor fees. Thank you, President Pro Tem Reisner.
Thank you. We've had a second, so all those in favor... I'm sorry?
I have a question about the $8,000 for municipal pool maintenance contract. Who is that with, and what is that for? And how does that relate to the recent closing of portions of the pool and the maintenance required to bring that back online?
Yeah, so I don't have the name of the pool maintenance contract off the top of my head tonight. I'd have to get that information for you. I know that we had a control panel that controlled the, that controls, you know, one half of the chlorine generator. That control panel had failed, and so it's a fairly significant expense that, you know, ultimately took away costs associated with ongoing maintenance of the pool, and so that was one of the reasons that we asked for additional money, or asking for additional money in the TC 300s and 270 for this year. With regard to the thing that caused the recent closure, you'll have to give me a little bit more specifics about the portion that you're talking about.
The lap lanes and the diving well were closed.
And, you know, I mean, with the five different bodies of water that we have there, you know, they're all kind of on their own system for chlorine regeneration and for the filters, or chlorine generation and for the filters, and I think there was a glitch, basically, as they brought it online with some component of that. I don't have the specifics to say that, you know, this $8,000 has to do with that particular closure. I don't think it does, because, you know, we started this appropriation, you know, six weeks ago or whatever, and that glitch just happened. I believe that probably has more to do with new staff, you know, getting used to the particular steps that they need to do to double-check, to ensure that those filters continue to work correctly and the chlorine regeneration continues to work correctly for that particular component of the pool.
I guess what I'm trying to get at here is, today's June 6th. The pool's been open 10 days, and I just don't want us to get into a situation where every meeting, you're sitting there having to ask for more money for this pool.
Member Crowe.
Just to answer one of Member Swank's questions, I believe the company is Buckeye Aquatics.
Okay, thank you.
Any other... Any other comments concerning this ordinance? Member Spielnis.
Yes. So, I'm just curious about where we're at with the income tax refunds. Are we just about done with that now? Or are we going to need more money?
Excuse me, but what does that got to do with this ordinance?
Oh, there's $200,000 for it.
Yeah. To cover income tax refunds.
Okay. I'm sorry I have to look at your screen because my computer's sort of on the fritz. Sorry about that. Yep, there it is. Thank you.
So, any, any word on where we're at with that?
I, I believe there may be more refunds that will be due between now and the end of the year. I mean, this isn't the, I don't think this is the last of it.
So, the $200,000 isn't going to be enough?
Pardon me?
So, the $200,000 isn't going to be enough?
It's enough for right now. We can get an update from Auditor Heck.
Okay. I just want to get a sense of if we're, you think we're mostly done, pretty much done? Yeah.
She referenced, Auditor Heck referenced October on several occasions. I guess with extensions.
Member Crowell.
Thank you, President Protem Reisner. The auditor's unable to be here with us tonight, but I believe that the last accounting that I saw was that $498,000 in refunds were issued. I believe this body has appropriated $550,000, not including this $200,000. And the auditor's office is hopeful that this should be good for the end of the year.
Thank you.
But we never know until October. There's another deadline for local businesses, I think. So, it's not for sure, but that was about, I think, the semaines. It is a lot of money. I agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Crowell. Any other comments? Okay. We'll hold the vote. All those in favor of adopting 7622, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. It's passed. Ordinance 7722, an ordinance authorizing retroactive pay for the Chief Deputy Clerk Athens County Municipal Court introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Protem Reisner. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 7722.
Second.
Thank you, Members Ziff. I'm going to go ahead and read the sections here. Athens City Council does hereby authorize a retroactive payment to the January 2022 hire date of the Chief Deputy Clerk of Athens County Municipal Court of $247.26, an increase in the hourly rate of pay from 1958 to 2010 per hour. Thank you, Member Reisner.
Any comments from members of council? Administration? Members of the audience? Very well. We'll hold the vote. All those in favor of adopting 7722, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. So, adopted. Ordinance 7822, an ordinance amending the auditor's 2022 staffing levels and compensation for the seasonal pool manager authorized by ordinance 141-22 introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Member Crowell, would you care to speak to it?
Yes. Thank you, President Protem. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 7822.
Second.
Thank you. Section 1 reads, the 2022 staffing levels in the auditor's office and compensation for the seasonal pool manager authorized by ordinance 141-21 are hereby amended to read as attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference. And the changes here are, in the auditor's office, changing a, the name of position from administrative assistant to an executive administrator. And also, for the lifeguards and swim instructors, a pay range starting at $16 per hour, and it can increase to $4 above that amount. Thank you, President Protem Reisner.
Comments from members of council?
Director, yes?
Yes.
Director Stone, are we still shooting for $18 on that?
It, it is. It's, this is pool manager, just to make a correction. It's not, pipe cracks instructor. Pool manager position.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Any from the administration? Public? Very well. Let's hold the vote. All those in favor of adopting 78-22, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. So, approved. Ordinance 79-22, an ordinance authorizing a pay increase due to additional duties assigned to the position of executive administrator in the auditor's office introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Protem. I would like to make a motion to approve 7922.
Second.
Thank you, Members Ziff. Section 1, Athens City Council does hereby authorize an hourly increase in pay of $1 for the executive administrator position in the auditor's office from $21.71 to $22.71. Thank you, Member Reisner.
Any comments from members of council? Members of the administration? Public? Very well. Let's hold the vote. All those in favor of adopting 79-22, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. We'll move on to ordinance for second reading. When we cover this section, I will read the title of the, of the ordinance. If any members would need to comment, they may do so. Ordinance 8022, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for small city programs funds for the 2022 solicitation cycle and declaring an emergency introduced by Councilmember Reisner. I have nothing to add to it. Ordinance 8122, an ordinance authorizing the disposal of a mower at the water treatment plant introduced by Councilmember McCary. Ordinance 8222, an ordinance amending the 2022 appropriation ordinance introduced by Councilmember Crowell. Ordinance 83-22, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $9 million of bonds by the City of Athens, Ohio for the purpose of financing the costs of construction, of constructing a new fire station, making site improvements, and acquiring furniture, equipment, and furnishings, and a site therefore, and matters related thereto, and declaring an emergency introduced by Councilmember Crowell. Member Swank?
Question on this one. It really pertains to 8322 and 8422, the site. Two things. Number one, the petition that we received over the course of the last 10 days. But more importantly, in committee last week, we talked about land acquisition and possible land transfer swaps with Ohio University. The site where we have deemed it best to place the fire station is right off the Simpson Avenue roundabout, land currently owned by Ohio University. Do we have that land yet?
So, to your, to your question, Member Swank, about, at committee last week, talking about the leases associated with that, the law director and myself have been working furiously with both the surveyors who are preparing the legal descriptions, as well as Ohio University, and what is an appropriate lease instrument to have a, an attachment to an ordinance that would authorize those leases that we talked about last week. We weren't in a position to bring it forward tonight because it's just, it's just not clean enough yet as far as the back and forth. I anticipate next week will be when we will introduce those ordinances associated with acquiring that land. With regard to the site itself and the footprint itself, interestingly, I have sitting up here at this desk, a, the, the plot of survey that shows the Simpson Avenue site specifically and what would be leased by the City of Athens from Ohio University, and then what the footprint for the fire station would look like within that leased area. So, you know, at the end of the meeting this evening, if you'd like to, to take a look or, or share or whatever, that just came off the press today. So, I grabbed it before I came up here and I have it sitting here just because I thought people might be interested. But, but like I said, it will be prepared, you know, knock on wood, to, to present as a first reading next, next Monday.
Will those leases be independent of one another? Or will the fire station lease be contingent upon some other land in the city?
The, the ordinances will be independent of one another. I mean, you'll be, the city council will be authorizing the Service Safety Director to lease the property from Ohio University for purposes of the fire station and to lease the option to use the land of the South Side Park to Ohio University. The terms that we've negotiated with the administration of Ohio University is that, you know, one is contingent upon the other. So, you know, they would not enter into one if the other one didn't, didn't pass, if that, that were to make sense.
So, that's where I'm going with this ultimately?
Yeah. It won't be, you know, because the instruments are, are separate instruments, you know, there's an instrument that the city would use to, to convey rights to the university. There is an instrument that the university would use to convey rights to the city. It's not going to say in that instrument that the consideration for said, said conveyance is the other lease. However, I understand, you know, from guidance received from the mayor and from this body, that I wouldn't enter into the lease with one without the other. And likewise, the university has, has, has told us that they wouldn't do it unless, unless they occurred simultaneously.
So, this is new news to a lot of people, the South Side Park part. And we are already beginning to hear pushback from the community on that. So, if we were to continue with this, and then as a body, council said, no, we're not giving up South Side Park. Can we still get the land for this $9 million fire station?
The short answer is no. The more, you know, I guess nuanced answer is that the terms associated with South Side Park are ultimately an option to use. And the city would continue to maintain it and use it as a park until such time that the university would exercise that option, which the reason for it is in support of a rigid redevelopment plan. Right now, there are no plans for what, if anything, the university would do to, you know, modify the existing footprint of the South Side Park. But they would like that option and they see it as, as, you know, an equal, you know, trade, for lack of a better term. But, but, you know, to the beginning of your question, you know, I, I don't believe it'll be, you know, exercised within the next 10 years, really. I mean, if you look at the amount of time it's going to take to, to do a rigid redevelopment, but, you know, that's not what is going to say on paper. What's going to say on paper is an option to use within the same timeframe that the, that the south, or that the, that the city would be leasing the space for the fire station. But to go back to the beginning of your question, is one contingent upon the other? It is. And so, I, I don't know that there's another way.
That's scary.
Member Crowell.
Thank you, President Protem Reisner. In the interest of being transparent and in making sure we have all the information out in front of the public, I believe the way that the agreement is worded is that the playground, which we think of as South Side Park that abuts Richland Avenue, in order for that space to be used by the university, it would have to come back before council and this body would have to approve that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Oh, Member McCary.
Thank you. One more question pertaining to the communications reference earlier, acknowledgement of receipt of petitions. I'm seeking clarification about the role of citizen petitions in terms of their ability to influence council decisions. Is there an explanation in terms of if a petition reaches this many number of signatures or anything that we would want the public to understand about receiving a petition and what is done after that?
I think at this point, the petition is just to make known the wishes of people in the community and to try to influence council and council's decisions. But it has no other legal effect. Let's say that an ordinance passes, an ordinance like this passes, then there's always the power of referendum of the citizens. But this is just more informational to council members of the, of those citizens who are interested.
Thank you for that clarification.
Member Crowell.
Thank you, President Protem. I'd like to add too, that what I appreciate about the petition is that it includes the stated support from a wide swath of our community, including minors. So, it's not, I don't believe from the voting public, it's not a legal document, in that it's got a very wide range of people who have signed on to it.
Okay. Now, let's move on to ordinance 8422, an ordinance authorizing final design, engineering, and construction services for a new fire headquarters, project number 346, introduced by Councilmember McCary. Comments? Okay. Ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 85-22, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 29, Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.36, prohibited actions to add Section 29.36.02, tenant's right to pay to stay, introduced by Councilmember Ziff. Councilmember?
Thank you, President Protem Reisner. I know we've talked about this in committee. And this, it took a couple of weeks just to make sure we had all the wording sort of sorted out for the ordinance. So, we're bringing it here for the first reading. If I may, I'd like to, can I read the whereas's?
Oh, please do.
All right. So, all right. Whereas, the state of Ohio is one of only five states in the country that permits a residential landlord to file for eviction immediately upon non-payment of rent. And whereas, unlike mortgage companies, residential landlords are allowed to refuse all future rent payments and commence eviction proceedings, even if a tenant immediately recognizes the deficiency of payment and is able and willing to correct it. And whereas, evictions for non-payment of rent lead to regional vulnerabilities that prolong economic instability, create educational impairments for children displaced by evictions, increase costs to the homeless system, and negatively impact community stability and relationships. And whereas, eviction has been shown to cause a 70% increase in the likelihood of an evicted person using the emergency room, as well as an estimated $8,000 cost over two years, with costs being divided between emergency room use, homeless shelter use, and lost wages. And whereas, studies have shown that eviction dramatically worsens mental health with a 10% increase in the probability of hospitalization for a mental health condition in the two years after eviction. And whereas, the council of the City of Athens seeks to close this legal loophole by allowing tenants to cure a non-payment of rent by tendering the full amount owed, including reasonable late fees, court costs, and where applicable, reasonable attorney's fees prior to being evicted. And whereas, should a tenant be able to pay all past due rent, late fees, court costs, and where applicable, reasonable attorney fees to the landlord, the tenant should have an equitable right to redeem and maintain their tenancy. And whereas, tenant's right to pay to stay will promote educational stability, decrease the burden on the human safety net, such as the shelter system, and ensure fairness by giving the courts and the community something tangible to reference. And I won't continue to read the entire ordinance. People are welcome to go through and read that on their own time. It's another four pages. But yeah, I think those whereas's fairly accurately sum up most of the reasoning for bringing this forward.
Comments from council concerning the first Comments from council concerning the first reading? Members of the administration? From the public? For those members of the public who would like to comment on this or any other ordinance that comes before the council, you will be given three minutes and please state your name and your address and if you represent any, any group. And the official timekeeper will begin.
Good evening, council. My name is Lucy Schwalle. I live at 146 East State in Athens, Ohio. Um, I'm the managing attorney of Southeastern Ohio Legal Services in Athens. And I was invited to speak here this evening by council member Swank, council member Swank, regarding the proposed pay to stay legislation that's being considered by council. As background, I'm an attorney who represents low income tenants in housing cases. While there are many different reasons why a tenant may be served with an eviction, one of the most frequent that we encounter is a tenant who has failed to pay their rent for one reason or another. I have a client who wanted to be here tonight, um, but could not. She has given me permission to share her story with council. My client, who I will call Sally, moved into a mobile home in a mobile home park, uh, here within Athens city limits in 2019. Sally is a single mom who's raising a child with disabilities. Sally works as a substitute teacher for Athens City Schools in Alexander. Sally was diagnosed with COVID-19 in January, causing her to miss multiple weeks of substitute teaching jobs and was required to stay home even longer while her son was required to quarantine. As a result, she was unable to pay her February rent. She received a notice to leave in mid-February and an eviction was filed in early March. At that point, she had been able to work again steadily and had the full amount of back rent available to pay, including late charges. I met Sally at our Tenant Assistant Project. It's an eviction clinic we hold here at Athens Municipal Court, um, the day that she had her eviction scheduled. After accepting her case for representation and learning that she had, was able to pay the full amount of past due rent, uh, we attempted to negotiate with the landlord and landlord's attorney in order to allow for payment and dismissal of that eviction. Unfortunately, the landlord refused to consider allowing Sally and her son to, uh, stay. The best we are able to do was to have Sally pay that full back rent and late fees, um, and negotiate for her to stay until June 1st so her son could finish out the school year. Unfortunately, however, she was required to move at June 1st. If this legislation had been in effect, Sally would have been able to maintain housing for her and her son, and this is just one example of many. There are many reasons why low income renters have income instability that may be unfamiliar for those who haven't experienced those challenges. The gig economy does not provide for paid leave, there's no cushion for unexpected expenses such as car repairs, and government benefits sometimes change with little to no notice to the recipient. Evictions follow tenants, limiting housing, housing options and credits for years to come. This legislation would give additional options for renters to keep them housed.
Can you speed it up?
Sure. When their income instability impacts their ability to pay rent, but it will still allow the landlord to be made whole. So, thank you very much, and I can answer any questions if you'd like.
Uh, Member Swank?
Couple of questions. Thank you for being here this evening. Uh, as you well know, uh, council has received, um, opposition to this proposed ordinance. And part of that opposition references two things. Number one, uh, the recent Hamilton County, uh, court's refusal to, uh, to enforce a duly passed, uh, action of that council. Would you care to address that and your thoughts on it, uh, as a professional attorney?
Sure. Um, just to be clear, I have not seen any opposition, um, to the ordinance, so I'm not sure specifically what you're, um, referring to. I, I am familiar, however, with the Hamilton County situation. The way this ordinance is drafted is it's an affirmative defense that can be proposed, uh, by the attorney in an eviction case. So it's clear in this ordinance, it does not say that it obligates the landlord in any way to accept it. What it does do is it creates a affirmative defense in that eviction hearing. Um, if a similar, you know, situation were to occur where, um, a, a court was, uh, not acknowledging, um, that affirmative defense, um, there are levels of appeal, uh, here in Athens, it's the Fourth District Court of Appeal, um, that could be used to, uh, to sort that out as well. So I don't believe that Hamilton, the Hamilton situation, uh, restricts this council from taking any action. And I also know that I believe some, I believe it's one courtroom in Hamilton County that is not, I'm not sure that it is all courtrooms in Hamilton County that is not recognizing that legislation.
The second question is, would you speak to how a lack of an ordinance like this could allow a landlord to use non-payment for eviction when re, in reality, they're, uh, evicting someone for things that are protected by law, such as, um, marital situation, et cetera, et cetera.
Sure. Uh, if a tenant has not paid rent, it is a simple, clear-cut way to initiate an eviction proceeding, get a judgment, and get a writ of restitution. So, um, if, uh, there could be many things going into that landlord's decision, but if rent is not paid, that's what we see. We see a complaint for non-payment of rent. Um, it is, you know, as simple as, was it paid by the state or any grace period? If it is not, um, there, there's no defense to that. Um, we do raise equity defenses in certain very particular situations, um, but in a, you know, normal private, uh, rental situation, um, there is not case law that supports that. Um, so I, you know, I, I think that there may be other reasons, right, pretense for why evictions, um, may be being filed. Um, there would be no investigation into that, right, if it's for non-payment. So I can't speak to any practices like that, um, our current, you know, the landlords, um, here in Athens, but it's always a concern.
Thank you. Oh, Member Crowe?
Thank you for being here.
Yes.
Um, I've also heard that, um, there's some objection to this, that, um, our rights to home rule do not give us the ability to have this kind of ordinance, that a municipal corporation cannot, uh, that the Ohio Revised Code doesn't allow for us to have this home rule. Can you speak to that at all?
Um, I wish I had some, uh, research to, to answer your question. I have reviewed the Athens County Tenants Packet that does have some information in that. Um, and if council is interested, um, absolutely Southeastern Ohio Legal Services could take a closer look at that and provide some additional information. So, no, I can't speak to that, um, right now, but again, I do think there's some good information about that in the packet, and we can get some more research on that if council's interested.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, Member Spielman?
Hi. Um, thank you, and thank you for being here. Um, so one of the things that did come up that was mentioned in the packet, and I had specifically asked about this, is, uh, are there any other statutory cities that have an ordinance like this? And yes, there, there are. So apparently, we can, as a statutory city, do this. Obviously, the wording is going to be different from one to another, and we have to be careful to, you know, not cross that line, but yes, we can. It's the bottom line.
I'd like to make a brief statement on that.
Please do.
There is one other statutory, I believe it's a statutory village, but when I looked at it, and we're talking about home rule, uh, we talk about home rule for situations involving public health, safety, and morals. And when, um, Member Ziff was drafting this, I asked, uh, asked him to, uh, put in a couple more sections in the whereas to show how this is public safety, health, safety, um, situation, and he did that. And, um, I think in two of the whereas sections, he talks about, uh, how eviction dramatically worsens mental health and, um, the likelihood of, of a person using an emergency room and the cost. So I think that would go to public health and safety. So there's an argument. Can never be sure, you know, if it was challenged, I could never be sure that, um, what, what would happen. There hasn't been a court case at this point. My understanding from Hamilton County is that there may be a decision sometime this month. But right now, the judge isn't, at least one judge in Hamilton County has said, I'm not going to enforce this.
Any other questions? Oh, Member Ziff?
Just to, just to, thank you, just to add a small bit of information, uh, as well about that particular Hamilton County situation. This is also the same judge that was, uh, refusing to enforce, uh, the federally mandated, uh, moratorium on, on evictions during the pandemic. Um, so there is sort of a proven track record to this particular individual. Um, so just to keep that in mind as we go along. And also, thank you for being here. Yeah, my goodness. Thank you so much.
Any other comments?
My name is Lori Bergshausen. It's great to be here again. Sorry I was late. I had, uh, my first dance class tonight. And I would like to take this time to answer some questions about pay to stay, and these particular questions, um, come from a pay to stay technical guide from the Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio, which actually does have six pages that references, um, home rule, so I'd be happy to, um, emulate along to you all. Um, the first question is, does pay to stay make it harder to remove a problem renter that poses dangers to the community? No. Pay to stay is only a defense to an eviction for non-payment of rent. It does not shield renters who violate other tenant duties like those relating to health and safety of the premises, criminal activity, or drug offenses. Do landlords lose money through pay to stay? No, they do not have to. Most jurisdictions require tenants to pay all past due rent plus late fees and legal fees to ensure that the landlord is made whole before the protection will apply. What is the penalty for non-compliance and who monitors that? There is no penalty and no municipal enforcement required. Pay to stay codifies an affirmative defense as staff manager of souls, Lucy Schwalle mentioned earlier, to an eviction, meaning that tenants must raise it in court to protect their rights. Expanding access to free legal services, including through a right to council, can further promote the equal protections of laws in Ohio. Can municipalities prevent landlords from abusing this protection by extracting unfair late fees and expenses that are out of line with the market? Yes. Some jurisdictions like Toledo and Cleveland Heights define what they consider to be reasonable late fees that the tenant must pay. Why would landlords refuse to accept rent? Attorney, attorneys frequently advise landlords to refuse late rent to preserve the right to pursue an eviction action. With the Ohio Landlord Law website operated by two Columbus-based attorneys advising, quote, "If you are a landlord and you receive partial slash rate, late rent after you have filed an eviction, your best course of action is to send a correspondence to the tenant that you are not accepting the payment and that you are proceeding with an eviction," unquote. In, oh, the, in, uh, in an overheated housing environment, landlords may also seek to terminate a lease agreement prior to its natural expiration date if they perceive, perceive a market opportunity to increase rents. And as we all know, the housing market is hot right now, so, um, that is a possibility that could happen. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, I would be happy to share that packet with you all, that technical guide created by the Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio that does have those six pages referencing home rule. The entire packet itself is around 41 pages. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Did anyone have any questions for the?
Should we stay up there?
Member Spielman?
Oh, well, it does bring up, and this is one thing I was on my mind, uh, from the first time, is the reasonable attorney fees. That is really, you know, what is a reasonable attorney's fees? Do we, and that there was, I believe, that there were some, uh, ordinances that had some kind of guid, guidance about that. And the other thing is, is it possible, I guess it's a question for Law Director, uh, Lysen, too, um, can we require landlords to accept rent? I mean, is that something we even could talk about? Because I mean, if they're using that as an excuse to kick somebody out.
This, as, um, I think Director Schwalle and, um, our current speaker, uh, stated, this is a defense to the action. And so, once a action is filed in court, if the tenant presents the, uh, late rent, um, the court costs, reasonable attorney fees, then it's a defense and, uh, it would be up to the judge to decide as to whether or not, uh, the, the court would make, uh, go forward with that eviction action.
Okay. The legal stuff is not my expertise, so that's why I want some clarification. Thank you.
And as to your other question, some ordinances do reference a cap on late fees, whether that's $25 or 5% of whatever the monthly rent is, so that I believe that would be an option. Um, I'm not sure if that was discussed with Senator and Director Lysen.
If I may, um, just if, if we're just talking about the, the, the late fees, um, it is in here, uh, under section, um, where are we? Hold on, scroll up, see where am I? Section H, uh, way down here. Um, and it says that a, a late payment fee for any month may not exceed the larger of $25 or 5% of the monthly contract rent.
Actually, what I was referring to is attorney fees.
Attorney fees. Um, I don't think there's a specific number written into it for that.
It just says reasonable, and that would be up to the, the court to determine what was reasonable and if applicable. And I think the conversation we had, or you had last week, or at some point, was that, if the landlord is an LLC, then the landlord is prohibited from filing the action and has to hire an attorney to file the eviction action. And that's where the, if applicable, the, uh, reasonable attorney fees would come in.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you all. Appreciate, uh, we will allow me to speak.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Any others? Well, your hand was up first.
Okay. Hi, uh, my name's Catherine King. Um, I'm also a member of United Athens County Tenants. Um, I just wanted to take this opportunity to talk about another benefit of pay to stay, which is that it expands protection for tenants who are sexually harassed by, um, their landlords. And I think this is kind of maybe what you were getting at, Councilwoman Swank. Um, some people have criticized pay to stay by saying it's already best practice and what most landlords choose to do, uh, which is true, but without having a pay to stay ordinance in place, landlords can exploit their ability to evict tenants as soon as they are a day late on rent. Um, so we've seen this happen in the past when landlords want to retaliate against their tenants for turning down sexual favors. UACT held a panel last fall with speakers from local organizations, including Survivor Advocacy Outreach Program, My Sister's Place, and Southeastern Ohio Legal Services. Um, and as we were preparing for this panel, it became clear, um, that harassment by landlords is a widespread issue and that landlords deliberately target vulnerable people, um, who are less likely to pursue legal action against them when they're harassed. Um, so pay to stay would thus protect those people by making it more difficult for landlords to evict them in a retaliatory manner. Thank you.
Before you leave, could you get, give us your address?
Oh, sorry. Uh, 17133 Truton Road.
I might forgot to do that. Something I go shake.
Yes, sir. Name, address, three minutes, add a phonetic.
Hi, I'm Nick Bohanek. Um, I live at 79 North Schaper Street, um, and I have a letter. Can you read? Dear Athens City Council, Ohio is one of five states that permits a landlord to file for an eviction immediately upon non-payment of rent. This leaves tenants and their families in a precarious position, particularly during a health crisis that has created substantial economic uncertainty. In Athens, almost 75% of evictions filed in 2021 were due to non-payment. Evictions have been shown to have a variety of negative effects, including being the leading cause of homelessness and impacting students' long-term educational success. The good news is that municipality, municipalities have the power to pass a pay to stay ordinance. Pay to stay ordinances protect, prevent a landlord from evicting a tenant for being late on rent, as long as the tenant is able to pay in full by the date of the eviction hearing. This allows the tenant time to request assistance from local rental assistance programs, which are more available than ever as the households attempt to recover from the COVID-19 pandemic. Landlords still have the ability to evict tenants for other reasons, such as property, damage, or unauthorized animals. Landlords also still have the ability to charge reasonable late fees when tenants fail to pay on time. Pay to stay thus ensures housing stability for families while landlords receive the money necessary to operate without loss of income through an eviction and re-rental process. At least 12 other Ohio municipalities have passed pay to stay ordinances. Of these 12, 11 are charter cities and one, Newburgh Heights, is a statutory village. United Athens County Tenants, along with the undersigned organizations, implores the city council to enact a similar ordinance as soon as possible. Sincerely, the United Athens County Tenants, Athens City Commission on Disabilities, Quality Ohio... Ohio, Hawking Athens Perry Community Action, or HAPCAP, My Sister's Place, Ohio Poverty Law Center, Southeast Ohio Chapter of the National Lawyers Guild, Survivor Advocacy Outreach Program, United Campus Ministry, UCM, Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Athens, and United Campus Ministry.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, thank you. Move on to ordinance 8622. An ordinance amending Chapter 7.05 Parking Regulations and 7.06 Tow Truck Regulations and Athens City Code Title VII Traffic Code introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Allow me to read the ordinance. Whereas pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code 4513.601, the Public Utilities Commission establishes the fees for vehicle removal from private towaway zones and whereas pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 4921.25A, any person, company, or corporation that is engaged in the towing of motor vehicles is subject to regulation by the Public Utilities Commission, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio, Section 1. In accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, Section 4513.60, 4513.601, and 4921.25, Athens City Code Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter 7.05 Parking Regulations, and Chapter 7.06 Tow Truck Regulations are hereby amended to read as attached heretofore in incorporation herein by reference. Section 2, this ordinance shall be in full force and in effect at the earliest moment permitted by law upon its passage and approval by the mayor. The ordinance read for the first time. Any comments? Counsel?
Even though I've only been on council for five months now, we're into the sixth with June, when an ordinance comes before council, I often ask several questions. First is, what problem does the proposed ordinance solve? Second question I often ask is, what issue is addressed by a proposed ordinance? And the third question is, what benefit does the proposed ordinance render to the majority of the citizens of the city of Athens and its visitors? When I look at this ordinance, my answer to all three of those questions is none. A few short years ago, whether it was three or whether it was four, I'm not sure. And Debbie, I can't find your email to tell me the exact date. But in the last three or four years, this exact same issue came before council. Not this council, but still the City Council of Athens. And that body, by a vote of five to two, voted to table it. Voted to table it. Never made it to second reading, certainly never made it to third reading. I guess my question would be, what has changed in the last three years? What has changed in the last three years that would necessitate bringing this forward? There are all parts to this that I could cite, tear apart, criticize, take issue with. But one in particular bothers me. And this strips the city of its power to license tow truck drivers. Yes, there are regulations the state has, but the state has lots of regulations on a lot of things that we, as a city, over the last 100 years, have added to. Just this morning, as Member Crowell mentioned, we had an extremely productive meeting with Director Stone and the co-director, Andrew Chickie, to begin talking about the upcoming trash ordinance. We're getting on this more than a year in advance. And one of the things we talked about this morning was the licensing of trash haulers in the city of Athens. The licensing of trash haulers. Licensing people to take away my junk and your junk. I think it would naturally follow, if we're going to license tow, or license trash haulers, we would certainly want to license somebody who's taking away your personal property. And in some cases, personal property worth 40, or 50, or $60,000. In no way am I excusing or defending people who park illegally, particularly those who willingly park illegally, hoping not to get towed. They violated the law. They have violated the law, assuming signs are posted and all the other regulations set by the state and the city have been followed. If we were to pass this ordinance, we won't be licensing tow truck drivers anymore. And that concerns me. And there are other things in here. But in the interest of your time and council's time, I answer why, or I ask why. And I see really no reason to advance this proposed ordinance on at this point in time. I don't see anything that's changed in the last three years. And I think those five council members who voted to table it three or four years ago made a very, very wise decision.
Member Spielman?
Yeah, I'm really puzzled by this because, as some of you know, I'm on the ad hoc sidewalk committee. And yes, there's all kinds of, you know, Ohio Revised Code rules about sidewalks across the board. But we still have a lot of sidewalk ordinances that are specific to Athens. Why, in a situation like that, and many others, would we have local ordinances and essentially, in this case, that profoundly affect some people's lives if they mistakenly parked in the wrong place, whatever, they made a mistake? Yes, they did something illegal. Yes, they should have their car towed, or whatever. But it can profoundly affect people's lives. Therefore, it seems to me we ought to be somewhat careful about who does this and how it's handled, that we can also address it locally, rather than someone does, you know, make this mistake and they have to figure out if they were treated badly or towed unfairly or whatever, they have to go through some state body to figure this out. That's just not going to happen for people who are at the lower end of the income scale and are, you know, working paycheck to paycheck. So I would like to say that, as far as I'm concerned, this should be tabled and reconsidered in its entirety, rather than gut it.
Any other comments? Member Swank?
To that end, I would move that we table 8622 until such time as we can...
Kick the can down the road?
No, until such time as to we can do further research and establish a true need for such an ordinance.
I would argue not to table it. This has been brought up and it has been discussed many times. I think the reasoning behind this, I think Police Chief Pyle wrote a very good explanation of why he's in favor of this ordinance. Everyone should have got a copy of it. I think his reasoning was sound. We don't license tow trucks anyway. Haven't done it in years. So I don't see how we're giving up a ride of something that we haven't even done. And why do we license things to begin with? What's the purpose of licensing?
Well, to me, the purpose of licensing anything is to regulate it for the health...
Okay, but why are we regulating it? I mean, why does it need to be regulated?
For the health and safety of the citizens. Same reason we regulate teachers, we want to make sure they're qualified. The same reason we regulate...
No, I think that's not a very good analogy.
Okay, the same reason we regulate food trucks, so that we make sure that the person who walks up to the food truck...
That's to the health department.
But we regulate them.
No, we don't. That's the health department. That's the state of Ohio.
Anyway, there is a motion on the floor to table.
And I'm arguing against it.
But you can't argue until you call for a second. And if there's a second, at that point, we can discuss.
There has been a motion and...
And a second.
All right, now there's the second.
Now we can discuss.
Would the administration care to jump in on this?
Can you do it first? I called a lazy criminal last week when we talked about this particular topic. I believe that the information that Police Chief Pyle provided last week, as well as what he summarized in an email that he sent to you, Member Reisner, that I think he distributed, summarizes the position of the administration.
Member Ziff, I think you was going to make a comment?
Yeah, so I, you know, as much as I would love to listen to you two go at it for a while, I am, and I don't say this with a, I'm not trying to be contentious or anything like that, I just, I don't really understand why we don't. If we do regulate other things, why wouldn't we regulate something like this? And to me, we've never done it is nonsense. That's a non-statement. That's, like I said last time, we never had anything for these, but we did it because we needed to.
Do we regulate Uber?
As a city, no.
No, we don't. No. Why not?
I guess we haven't felt the need to.
Uh huh. And hypothetically, if you have a tow truck company that says in Lancaster, would you regulate them? Would you say, in order to do business within the city of Athens, you have to have a license?
Didn't we, in this, again, I'm...
I mean hypothetically.
So I'm not trying to sound contentious with this, and you're sort of a testy tone there, but didn't we...
Well, I'm a very testy person at my age.
Fair enough. But, and again, I'm just asking honest questions here because I'm just genuinely looking for clarification. I know, because a thing that goes off in my head was, it was like a month and a half or two ago, there was a communications company that was running line or something through here, and so we had to make them register with the city because they were then operating in our city. And so I don't really see why this would be... I mean, if a tow truck wanted to come do business in Athens regularly, then, or any kind of business, then I would want to, maybe not tow truck, but anything, I'd want to, you know, look at that. I just, I don't really see the difference between the two.
Well, I think the difference between the cable was this on our right-of-way.
So was that the main, it just, it was just because it was in the right-of-way? Was that...
That's why we had to have a vote, because land is controlled by the, city land is controlled by the city council.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and they wanted to put it on city right-of-way, so they had to come to us and say, can we please do this?
I don't think I phrased that correctly. What I mean is, yes, it's operating the city right-of-way, but that means it's operating in the, if they, so if it had, if they had just only like gone through like carefully on private property and never touched the city, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have then had to...
No?
Okay. Yeah, no, I'm just actually asking that. That's, you know, snap at me.
You're very sensitive tonight.
Okay. I'm going to cut myself off.
Anything else? Let's give someone else a chance. Member Crowell, do you have anything to say about it? I know you do.
Sure. President Fratton Reisner, thank you. I won't be voting for tabling this tonight, although there have been some, you know, interesting arguments that I would like to consider further. And I think we have three readings for good reason. And we are at first reading tonight. So that's what I have to say about this. Thank you.
Oh, Member Grace.
Thank you, President Fratton Reisner.
You're back.
Yes. I would simply echo Member Crowell's comments that tabling just to delay a decision doesn't seem to make sense to me at this time. As you eloquently said, kicking the can down the road, which happened several years ago, and nothing has been done with regard to adjusting. We are, the city is not currently complying with what is on the books. And so just continuing to table and just set it aside doesn't make sense to me. If someone wishes to introduce an amendment to keep control or licensing or regulation of tow companies or towing entities within the city's purview, rather than delegating it to the Public Utilities Commission, then an amendment stating that and outlining how that could be done could be offered on this ordinance. But to just continue to delay making a decision on it does not make sense to me. So I would also vote against tabling, along with Member Crowell.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Member Spielman?
Yes, I want to be really clear that it was not my intention when I seconded that motion that we would kick the can down the road. Instead, it was my intention to table it in order to really look at, and I think this was the intention of Member Swank, to really look at this overall and make a decision about what we want to keep and what we don't want to keep and what would make sense. And I'm, that is my only reason for wanting to table it, is to relook at it, see what other cities are doing. We have had some concerns about predatory towing for some people, which was, actually, this came up several years ago and has always haunted me, a story of a young woman who was trying to get her life together in Athens, and she had some health issues and whatnot. And she finally got herself a car, she got a job, and then, for whatever reason, her car got towed and she was unable to get it out of Hock. So therefore, she lost her job and she did a spiraling downhill again, starting from scratch. That, to me, was such a harrowing story, and not the only one. I've heard other stories like this, not just in Athens, but in general. And so I take this towing business really seriously. I don't want that to happen to anybody. To me, that's cruel and unusual punishment that is just not warranted. So again, it's illegal if they do it wrongly. Yes, it's bad, all of that. But I want to make sure that we're doing it really responsibly and that we don't have predatory towing companies out there, or any predatory actions related to towing that would put someone in this position in the future. So I don't know what the right answer is right now, but I would sure like to take a look at what is the right answer, rather than gutting this and saying, we don't want to worry about it anymore.
I don't see how this ordinance has anything to do with that. I mean, all we're doing, this ordinance simply brings city code in alignment with the state of Ohio's code. I mean, that's it. That's all we're doing. We're just acknowledging who can set fees, the PUCO. Who can regulate towing? The PUCO. So I don't really see the controversy here.
Well, then you could say that about sidewalk ordinances and every other ordinance we have in the city. Well, they've got state ordinances, so why should we have some locally?
No, we're not just talking about state ordinances. We're talking about who regulates and who manages, and that's the PUCO. Is there some state organization that runs or regulates sidewalks? Maybe, hell, but the state of Ohio, you never know.
That's really funny.
Well, that's the best I can come up with. Member Swank?
The PUCO in the Ohio Legislature, through the Ohio Revised Code, has given individual cities the rights to regulate towing...
Yes.
...and to set fees. Yes, it does. Yes, it does. It does not give us the right to... It does not give us the right to set fees in private tow zones, but it does give us the right to set fees in other places. And the law director will bear that out. Is that not true?
That's true. And I think that you made a call to the PUCO and verified what I had previously said, that under the 601 toes, which are private towaway zones that are posted on private property, that that's all regulated by the PUCO. But there are other fees, towing fees, under the 60 and the toes from city streets.
Exactly.
Fees can be set.
The PUCO also gives cities the right to license tow truck operators. The fact that we have chosen not to do that, and it started before Director Stone, so I'm not pointing the finger at him by any means, is irresponsible. And we, as a city council, to allow that to happen makes us culpable to that. And that's a bad example to set. If we're going to pass ordinances and then not enforce them, why do we even have the ordinance? We have an ordinance in the city saying you can't plant bamboo. Yet we've chosen not to enforce that. And that is one of the most invasive plants. It's against Ohio law to do. It's in the Ohio Revised Code. Yet we, as a city, have chosen not to enforce it. Once we pass an ordinance, we've done our job, and it becomes incumbent upon the administration. And again, this predates our mayor, predates everybody in this building in administrative capacity. It was a bad practice to start, and it's a bad practice to continue. We license a lot of things, plumbers, electricians, food trucks, I could go on and on. But that's not germane to the conversation. We need to take a deeper dive into this. If I really wanted just to kick this down the road, or if I really just wanted to draw this out, there are parliamentary ways to do that, that we could stretch this all the way to the end of our session on December 31st.
Oh, I'm sure.
As Solve said, I think it behooves this council to perhaps return us to committee. Let's take a deeper dive, because even amongst the administration, council, and the law director, there appear to be different interpretations of what the Ohio Revised Code says. And until we can get that clarified, I'm uncomfortable advancing this through the legislative process. Therefore, the motion to table it.
Well, there's a motion on the floor to table. It has been seconded. Any more discussion from council? Member McCary.
Thank you. I'd just like to ask a procedural question as a reminder about the difference between tabling at this time or the opportunity to return to committee.
Well, the motion's been to table at this point, and our Rule 16 talks about motions with demand permitted to lay on the table, which is the motion in the second right now, and that requires a majority vote.
And could you?
But this can go back to committee. Certainly, if it's tabled, it can go back to committee.
And could you just clarify if, instead of the current motion that's on the table, it had been a motion to return to committee, how that would be different from the standard tabling?
Well, we did that before, but in looking at our rules, there is really no way to bring that back. And in fact, we, we had to have a new ordinance.
Okay.
So that could be, that is the difference.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call for a vote.
Did you ask if there were any people in the audience interested?
Well, I've been thinking about that, but since this is a motion to table, as opposed to any discussion about actually moving forward with it, I think we need to get, whether or not we're even going to talk about it anymore before we get any more comments, so. So as I said, I've called for a vote. All those in favor to table the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to tabling, say nay.
Nay.
Perhaps we could have the hands.
I think we need a roll call vote. Okay, roll call vote. Member Fieldness.
Aye.
To table.
Yes.
Member Crowell.
Nay.
Member Swank?
Aye.
Member Reisner, nay. Member Grace?
Aye. Nay. Sorry, I am not in favor of tabling.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry.
Uh, Member Ziff?
Aye.
Aye, and Member McCary?
Nay.
How many?
Three, four. Three, four.
With the seven of us, there can't be a total.
Actually, could we do that again? I don't know if we got that correct, and I apologize. But let, let's go through that one more time, starting with Member. Aye to table. You, you voted. Aye to table. Okay.
Nay.
Aye to table.
Nay.
Nay.
Aye. Nay.
Four no and three yes.
Okay, so the ordinance first reading has not been tabled. It's still at first reading. Now, would someone from the audience care to speak to this? Name, address, you know.
Yep. Damon Crane.
Yeah.
Still at 96 Hudson Avenue, not representing any group tonight. I think there's a lot to unpack about this issue. The three points I want to touch on tonight are just why it's been so contentious, why there's been so much misinformation about it, and why APD has been the driving force behind trying to repeal the local towing regulations. As far as the misinformation, you know, this rumor that only PUCO has the authority just won't die, it seems. That's not what PUCO says. It seems very odd to me that city officials have, for at least three or four years now, oftentimes argued that we don't have the authority to regulate this locally, only PUCOs can set the fee caps, without even checking with PUCO to see if that's what PUCO says, and that's not what PUCO says. It's also not what the Ohio Supreme Court says. It's also not what the Ohio Revised Code says. If we could please put that rumor to rest, that would be great. Also, you know, when I started looking at this back in maybe September or October of last year, the thing I couldn't figure out was why APD was the driving force behind trying to repeal the local regulations that city officials just simply refuse to follow. Oh, wait, before I, before I go into that, though, let me just say, you know, as a former food truck operator, no, it's absolutely false that the city does not license tow trucks. The Code Enforcement Office licenses tow, or food trucks, I'm sorry. The Code Enforcement Office licenses food trucks on an annual basis. The city fire department also inspects food trucks on an annual basis and essentially signs off on them. That's in addition to the city county health department issuing a food service license. It's the city that issues the vendor license and that has the authority to repeal the vendor or revoke the vendor license. So certainly, as a city, we do regulate food trucks. As for why APD has been the driving force behind this, last meeting, Chief Pyle said, if we don't let towing operators charge up to the PUCO maximum, maximum fee cap, they're not going to respond to our calls anymore. And I think he finally said the quiet part out loud. The city is reliant on private towing operators to enforce city parking regulations. APD can issue a ticket, but if they need the vehicle towed, they've got to rely on a private company to do that. That has given the private companies a great deal of leverage and bargaining power. It also means that they're kind of working hand in hand, day in, day out, with the police department. They're on the same team, working together to solve the same problems. I think that's what resulted in a very odd situation where we had the city police chief attempting to negotiate with the city on behalf of private towing operators. Because it's simply false that they won't respond to city towing calls if we don't let them charge the highest possible fee. Because there are more than a dozen other Ohio cities that set their own fees. Cities have leverage too. We provide a great deal of the towing operators' business. That means we've got some bargaining power too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, audience? Administration? Okay, I think we've beat that one to death. Where are we at? I think we're somewhere around Bridges. Ordinance 8722, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit applications and enter into agreements with the Ohio Department of Transportation for municipal bridge and local major bridge program funds introduced by Councilmember Reisner. And let's see, let me just bring that one up. Having computer problems tonight. Very simple. Section 1, the mayor is hereby authorized to submit applications and enter into agreements with the Ohio Department of Transportation for municipal bridge and local major bridge program funds. Would the administration care to chime in on that?
I, I think, you know, we clarified it last week at, at committee. I don't think there's any additional information necessary.
Okay. Members of council, bridges, fairly uncontroversial. As long as they don't fall down. Okay. Members of the audience? Okay. Ordinance 8822. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs for issue one funds and to execute contracts as required, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. And I will bring that one up. Here it is. Whereas the state capital improvement program and local transportation improvement program both provide financial assistance to political subdivisions for capital improvements to public infrastructure, be it ordained by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio. Section 1, the mayor is hereby authorized to submit an application to the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, to participate in the state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs for issue one funds. Comments from council or the administration? Nope. All right. Ordinance 89-22. An ordinance authorizing West Washington Sidewalk and Safety Improvement Project Number 335, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. I'm on deck a lot tonight. Be it ordained by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to advertise, accept bids where necessary, and enter into contracts for West Washington Sidewalk and Safety Improvement Project Number 335. The 2022 Appropriation Ordinance 150-21 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $20,000 to Street Fund 220, Transaction Code 500, and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. Section 3, the safety, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $150,000 as follows. $130,000 from the CDBG Fund 248, Transaction Code 500, and $20,000 from Street Fund 220, Transaction Code 500, for said project number 335. Any comments? Member Swank?
I think this was mentioned last week, but would this also include streetlights?
Insofar as that we can afford street lighting associated with this project with this amount of money. The, there's, there's actually 20 streetlights in that section of the street. There's, we're pretty, or nearby. One of the problems is foliage in that area is really significant and it blocks a lot of the AEP rented streetlights in that area. So, so it will definitely include trimming as necessary to increase the lighting. As far as city-owned streetlights and adding city-owned streetlights, you know, the first goal of the project is to side all repairs. And then if we can add additional lights, we will do so.
Any other comments? Okay. Let's see. Ordinance 8922. An ordinance authorizing West Washington Sidewalk and Safety Improvement Project 335. Did I already mention that? Oh, sorry. Okay. Number 90, 9022, an ordinance authorizing construction and construction engineering for the water treatment plant, salt, storage, roof, slab, and beam replacement project, number 354, introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you. I'll just ask a question just for the educational benefit of the public as this comes up occasionally. There is a distinction between cost for construction and construction engineering. And I was hoping Director Stone might be able to just clarify that.
So this is a structural engineering project, and it's, it's semi-architectural in that, in that it's, you know, we're really dealing with a structure here. And there's always questions in architectural projects that go back to the designer during construction that requires oversight and work from a designer, such that you don't take that designer and just completely write him out of the process and then, you know, not have them engage. And so in this particular instance, there will be some expenditure. We, we paid $20,000 for design on this. That's captured in the total authorization. If you look at the section 3, that was money that was already in the budget. However, with the money that we're using to, to, you know, pay for the construction, there probably will be some fees paid to the designer, you know, in order to answer questions and solve problems along the way with construction.
Thank you. Any other details you care to share?
Total cost.
That'd be handy.
$255,000 from Water Fund 240, Transaction Code 500, capturing all costs to date. And this is for project number 354.
Okay. Any other comments?
It's Water Fund 740. I don't know if it says 240. Does it say 240? Yeah, we'll have to make that. I think that's a, a clarable correction that we need to ensure that we capture.
Thanks for catching that. Okay. Ordinance 9122, an ordinance authorizing a debt collection agreement between Capital Recovery Systems, Inc., and Athens County Municipal Court, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Protem Reisner. As discussed at committee and in the presentation we had by the clerk of court, this agreement would, is being requested by the municipal courts to, as an option for them to collect outstanding fines and fees. So section 1 of this ordinance reads, Athens County Municipal Court is hereby authorized to enter into a debt collection agreement with Capital Recovery Systems. Copy of said agreement is attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference. That's all I got. Thank you, Member Reisner.
Okay. Ordinance 9222, an ordinance amending the 2022 Appropriation Ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Protem. Couple of items here for appropriations. $33,308 to the General Fund for a Bureau of Workmen's Compensation Premium refund. And as discussed at committee, $10,117 will be appropriated to the Transportation Fund 214 as the city of Athens's remaining local share of a replacement light, low-floor transit vehicle for the total local cost share of $24,117. Thank you, President Protem Reisner.
Comments or anything from council or the public? Administration? All right. Well, that takes care of all the first reading ordinances. We're now at a resolution for first reading. R0322, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Protem Reisner. This is an annual resolution, accepting these amounts and rates for the city for, for fiscal year 2023, which begins January 1st, 2023. And this is for the city to receive the inside millage for property taxes in Athens Township at 2.6 mils. at 2.6 mils and Canaan Township at 2.4 mils. This resolution authorizes these tax levies and certifies them for the county auditor. I will just read the resolves here. "Resolved by the Council of the City of Athens, Athens County, Ohio, that the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission in its certification be and the same are hereby accepted. And be it further resolved that there be and is hereby levied on the tax duplicate of said city, the rate of each tax necessary to be levied within and without the 10-mil limitation as follows: As mentioned, Athens Township 2.6 and Canaan Township 2.40." Thank you, President Protam Reisner.
Thank you, Member Crowell. Any comments concerning this resolution? I'm going to adopt this thing, don't we?
It's a three reading resolution.
No. I'm just finding my notes, Sid.
We do have the one reading.
Oh, R.
Yep.
Okay. We have a one reading resolution here. Let's see. Right there it says.
Resolution, first reading. And it says a one reading.
Okay. Now, we have a one reading resolution, R0422, a resolution supporting the continued operation of the Veterans Administration Medical Center in Chillicothe, Ohio, introduced by all council members. Is there any member who would care to speak to this?
I'd be happy to read it if you'd like.
That's what I'm asking.
Whereas Athens City proper has a population of 24,362 and is the Athens County seat that has a population of 64,751. And whereas our veterans continue to have urgent and pressing medical needs that cannot be met within southeast Ohio should this facility be closed. And whereas many of our veterans will be required to drive upwards of four hours round trip to receive adequate health care should the facility in Chillicothe close. And whereas there is no available public transportation between our region and the nearest Veterans Administration facility in Dayton, Ohio. And whereas there is no alternative mental health facility for veterans in southeast Ohio for what can often be urgent life-saving services. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio. Section 1, "Athens City Council declares their unwavering support for and strongly recommends the Veterans Administration Medical Center in Chillicothe, Ohio remain open to provide critically important services to our veterans in southeast Ohio." Section 2, "This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law upon its passage and approved by the mayor."
Thank you, Member Crowell. I just want to say personally, I wholeheartedly support this, and I'd like to have someone make a motion that we adopt this resolution. Member Swank?
So move.
We have a second.
Seconded.
Thank you, Member McCary. Member Swank?
And as you alluded to earlier in today's meeting, I think it's only appropriate that we're doing this on the 78th anniversary of D-Day.
That's quite a coincidence.
Yes, sir.
How'd that happen? Would anyone else care to comment their support before we take a vote?
I just want to say a quick point, that I have a former student who works with this population at the Veteran Center, and she is really concerned. She felt that she couldn't politically comment, say anything about it for some obvious reasons, but there's a lot of distress about this.
I would agree, because I have some friends who are veterans and they do use the Chillicothe facilities more than I'd like to see them have to go. And I wholly support this. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, it has passed. Okay. Announcements and other business. I have no announcements. The administration? No announcements at all? Well, I, when do I mention we have a special session? Right now?
Under other business.
Under other business. Okay. Well, other business. We have a special session next week. So, in addition to our regular committee, we will also have a special session of council.
And the reason for that?
To get a lot of legislation passed before we all take off for our recess. Just to remind all council members that since we passed the resolution, you're required to sign it also, so.
Is that special session in addition to committee meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
The committee will take place first, I believe, and then we'll have this special session. Any other business? You already mentioned that PUCO is going to have a special public hearing tomorrow night here.
Tomorrow night, 7 o'clock, news chambers.
All right. Opportunities for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered by the agenda. Anyone out there? No? Oh, come on. Okay. In that case, we are adjourned at 8:55. No, we need a motion to, sorry.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor of adjourning at 8:55?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay? Put that down. I oppose.